Morning, everybody. Ryan Dorsey, Chair of the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Welcome to the -- this is the 74th term of the City Council? Is that right? Yeah. Welcome to the first land use docket, I guess, of the Land Use and Transportation Committee of the 74th term of the Baltimore City Council. As stated at the beginning of this term, we would try to organize land use bills into just one docket hearing each month. And here we are in, I guess, the fourth or fifth month of the term. And we're finally -- we've got some bills that have been introduced and heard by the Planning Commission and have been able to make their way to us to be heard on this fourth Thursday in the month of April. Today is Thursday, April 24th. To my right, we have committee members Paris Gray from the 8th District, Felicia Porter from the 10th District, John Bullock from the 9th District, and our staff member, Mr. Tony Leva. We are also joined by members of various city agencies. And we have four bills before us today, rezoning and conditional use bills. The first bill that we will call is Council Bill Number 250021, rezoning of 3221 Frederick Avenue, I believe from the I-1 zoning district to the IMU-1 zoning district. I will ask the -- oh, sorry. Mr. Committee Member, per the rules, can you go and take the podium to present to us? And then after you just go and do a little initial presentation, we'll have you take your seat again for any questions.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Again, I'm Councilman John Bullock, member of the committee. And the introducing now, again, our bill for rezoning 3221 Frederick Avenue. Just for your edification, this is a property that has been vacant for a number of years. The applicant has reached out to us and has also gotten community support. We believe it's a good step in the right direction to put formerly vacant factory buildings back into productive use in a way that's also respectful of the character of the neighborhood. As you will see in the report, there have been significant changes over the last few years as it relates to the level of vacancy, but also the opportunities for revitalization in the community. Again, we've gotten a good response, not only from the applicant, but also from members of the community as well. So with that, I'll take my seat unless there are any questions for me at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. We have reports from five agencies. We'll just run through them real quick. You can just let us know if you stand by your report or whatever. The Law Department.
Thanks, Chair Dorsey. Jeff Hockstetter with the City Law Department. The Law Department stands by its report and approves the bill for formal legal sufficiency.
Thank you. HCD.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Finance defers to the Planning Department, yes?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. Then we'll go to the Planning Department.
Planning Commission recommends favorable.
Great, thank you. And BDC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We stand by our favorable report.
This is easy.
Tom Welly, on behalf of BDC, we stand by our favorable report. Thank you.
Great. And we have what appears to be good findings of fact from the Planning Department and the Planning Commission report about the -- that are in the written findings of facts in their reports, that the I-1 was appropriate during the last comprehensive rezoning in 2017, but over time it's become, and especially with several years of vacancy, the IMU-1 district seems more appropriate at this time and constitutes a substantial change that meets the standard for this. Is there anybody here who needs to give testimony on this bill? If there's anything in particular to add? You don't have to, but you're -- come on up, Nate, if you want to. Okay, great. Shall we have a motion on the bill? The bill has been moved. All in -- we'll do a roll call. The Chair votes yes. Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock?
Yes.
Councilwoman Porter?
Yes.
Great. The bill will be recommended favorable to the City Council on Monday. We'll move on to the next bill. Look at that. I've just voted my first ever land use bill.
Yeah.
So I'm still getting my sea legs here. We will go next to Councilwoman Ramos. We will hear Council Bill 250017, rezoning 3439 to 3549 Keswick Road. Odd side to the sponsor of the bill. Let us know what's going on here.
Hi, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Thanks for your time today. I'm presenting this bill, 250017. You have your testimony in front of you. What this does is it rezones the -- only the odd side of the 34 and 3500 block of Keswick Road in Hampden from C-1 to R-7. And the C-1 zoning, it just kind of missed everybody in comprehensive rezoning, okay? And so we want to make that block consistent with the rest of the neighborhood, which is R-7. So if you remember also that we had a massive fire in October, and six of those houses have been demolished, and 14 of them in total were damaged. And when we were looking at helping the residents rebuild, notice that it is -- that side of the street was C-1 for some reason, even though for 120 some odd years that those houses have been there, it's always been residential. So I wanted to rezone it, to make it consistent with the area, and that would give guidance to the residents who are rebuilding in terms of their housing. And in my letter, I talk about that we had initially started this and did all of the notifications for a comprehensive rezoning. The Law Department has said that we need to do this as a piecemeal rezoning. I will tell you, this is a little frustrating because I had a bill last term, the rezoning of Darby Street in Elm for -- from R-6 to -- excuse me, R-7 to R-8, and was told -- and did it as a piecemeal, and was told to do it as comprehensive. So the Law Department needs to figure out exactly what is comprehensive and what is piecemeal. But either way, we can do this bill, if you want to do it as piecemeal, to say that it was a mistake, that the C-1 was overlooked in comprehensive rezoning, and we'd be able to do it and move it through that way. So I would appreciate your support. Also, the Planning Commission does have an amendment to take one property out, which is a church at the end of the street. I do not object to that amendment. Happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions. Anybody have any questions to answer? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Taking into account the comments that's just made about the comprehensive versus mistake, and also maybe I'll just save you a little time if I can, I'm happy and perfectly ready to find facts that this was a mistake as opposed to a comprehensive, if that will satisfy the need and it means it makes sense to me. Let's go to the Law Department for the bill report and more comments on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle Touth, on behalf of the Law Department. I would like to clarify actually our position. When I looked at this bill, it appeared that it did not meet the characteristics of a comprehensive rezoning. So I suggested or recommended that facts be found that would establish a change or mistake so that if this was ever challenged in the future, it would hold up on either way. How the Council decides to proceed is, of course, the Council's prerogative.
Okay. Anything else to add? Your -- the notes here says approve for formal legal sufficiency but unfavorable.
It does not say unfavorable, I believe.
Sorry, it's a mistake, apparently. All right, great. With that, okay. We will go to HCD. Jason.
Jason Wright, representing the Department of Housing and Community Development. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Planning?
The Planning Department recommended one amendment which the Planning Commission agreed with. We acknowledge that there was a mistake in the 2017 rezoning that made this side of the street C-1, though we are recommending removing 3439 Keswick Road, which is a church building on the southern end of the group. It was retained in the commercial predominantly pedestrian-oriented land use category, which is compatible with the existing C-1. So the Planning Commission offers that amendment and otherwise is in favor.
Great. I'm looking for the amendment. I know that's recommended.
I did not have it drafted.
I thought that had been drafted.
It's up there. It's on the ledger.
I know that I saw the amendment drafted. Let's see here. It is on the back, okay. It's printed on the back page of Page Five of the Planning Commission's staff report. Okay. So does everybody see that amendment? It reads on Page One and Line Two, strike 3439 through 3549, and substitute 3447 to 3549, and on that same page, blah, blah, blah. But it does exactly what was just said. It takes out one property or one owner's group, just one property, okay. Any questions about that amendment? Okay, great. Department of Finance.
Gabriel Stewart-Schickowitz here with the Department of Finance. We defer to planning on this issue.
Okay, great. We have some public -- yes.
Tyler Chanel, Deputy Director for Local Affairs, Mayor's Office. I just wanted to -- I know you know, Mr. Chair, but just for the rest of the members of the committee, when it comes to downzoning, we are going to be taking a closer look at some of these bills. We'll start to have Finance do more of an analysis on the potential impact to tax -- property tax revenue there. So just wanted to put that out there, that when we see downzoning of multiple parcels or particularly large parcels, we will be having an analysis done there of what the impact could be to property tax revenue.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay. Let's go to public testimony. Do we have a list of folks signed up? I know that the sponsor said there was one person who was --
One person online.
Going to be online.
People here.
Great. I don't have the list. If you're here, I know there's not many people here. If you are here to testify. Sure, yeah, sure, go ahead. If you could just let us know your name and your overall position to start, favorable, unfavorable, favorable of amendments, whatever, and then you can say whatever you need to say. And I'll give you two minutes.
My name is Elizabeth Thornberry. I'm resident at Wyman Park. I'm a resident.
Oh, sorry. Hit the button on the right side there.
Okay, I'll start over. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Thornberry. I am a resident of Wyman Park. I live pretty close to these properties, and I am opposing this bill. I have two reasons for my opposition. The first is that it's bad policy. Our neighborhood desperately needs more diversity in housing options. We should be making it easier, not harder, to build multifamily and mixed-use housing. The median sales price at Wyman Park has gone up significantly over the last year. It's now over $400,000. And we need housing options for people who don't have $400,000 to spend. I noticed that the HCC letter of support specifically noted that they don't want apartments in this location, and this is just classic "not in my backyard" sentiment. But this is my backyard too, and I want to share it with more people. To be clear, the residents rebuilt -- who are rebuilding of the fire-damaged properties can rebuild them as row houses regardless of what happens to the vacancy. This bill does not add any uses, it simply takes them away. Now, I live in Wyman Park because it is a great neighborhood. We have safe amenities, we have great schools, we have a fantastic park, we're walking distance to grocery stores, the library, and lots of other great amenities. And we should not be hoarding these resources for wealthy people who can afford single-family houses. Downzoning this property perpetuates economic segregation, and as we know, in Baltimore, economic segregation is highly correlated with racial segregation. Wyman Park is unfortunately still a pretty segregated neighborhood, which is a direct legacy of our city's overall shameful history of segregation. Most houses in this area, including mine, I looked up my own property records a couple years ago, were either developed with racially restrictive covenants or had them added to the early 20th century. And we know that Hampden, the kind of broader Hampden area, had a very active kind of vigilante movement essentially aimed at keeping out black residents until like the early 90s, basically. And so I think we should be actively working to undo that legacy by creating more opportunities for Baltimoreans of all backgrounds, including all economic and racial backgrounds, to live in high-resourced neighborhoods. My second reason for opposing this bill is straightforward. It is not legal. It is not legal as -- it's not comprehensive zoning. It just doesn't meet that definition, so we can't do it that way. Spot zoning has specific requirements. Zoning is inherently a state power, it's not a city power. We can do it in Baltimore City because Maryland has -- the state has chosen to designate zoning powers to the city. So when Baltimore City zones, they have to do it in compliance with that state law that delegated that power. And Maryland state law prohibits spot zoning except for two reasons. The one that's being referred to here is mistake. Mistake has a formal legal meaning in zoning law. Mistake does not mean we now think that was a mistake. Mistake means that there was a factual error that was relied on during the previous zoning process. I haven't heard anyone raise any suggestion that that's the case. If that's the case, you know, that changes the situation. But I have not heard any suggestion that there was a factual error relied on during the previous zoning process that would make this legal. Because it's a downzoning --
I need to wrap it up.
-- wrapping up. Because it's a downzoning, illegally downzoning opens this up to lawsuits, not just from the people whose property is being devalued, because this will lower property values, but also any taxpayer in Baltimore will have standing to sue under taxpayer standing. That could be expensive. But also, I think the Council should just follow the law. Like, that's a kind of basic expectation, I think, from our City Council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Blaze? Sorry, I'm being informal. I've known Blaze since I was born.
That hasn't all been roses.
You're too tall for that microphone. Why don't you just push it off a little bit? There you go.
Sure. My name is Blaze Ahern. I sit on the Hampden Community Council Board. We are in favor of this rezoning change. That's all.
Okay. Any reason why? I'm just curious.
Because it -- the other houses along Keswick, basically all except for this one tiny little section, are all in the R zoning. It seems that it would have been logical that they would have followed through. I'm not exactly sure how it happened, but it seems as though it was a mistake, honestly.
Okay. I didn't ask if there were any questions for the last testimony. Okay. Any questions, no? Thank you, Blaze.
Sure.
Jeffrey Holland?
Good morning. I'm Jeffrey Holland. I actually, I live in one of the houses listed, 3549. We are considered Wyman Park, but our chunk of Wyman Park between West 34th and West 37th is the stepchild of Wyman Park. We are, we have an apartment building, we have auto shop and sales center, we have a couple hair salons, we have the church. We want to maintain it as a neighborhood. We want to ensure that we have -- our best thing for us would be to be able to have our neighbors move back. Historically, we don't find that rental properties build neighborhoods, and it's just going to be an expensive apartment building. If someone builds an apartment building there, it's not going to be a low-income apartment building. We know that. So what we want to do is we don't want our little chunk of Wyman Park to become an extension of the avenue. We want to maintain it where people live, raise families, take advantage of our greatly improving schools. That's basically where we want to be with it. We want to be able to welcome our neighbors back, and we want to be able to have our new neighbors enjoy the neighborhood as we've enjoyed it. As far as whether it's totally legal or how it fits on that side, our concern is that we want to have our neighborhood stay our neighborhood. We don't want it to become something that's not, that doesn't want to be. That's basically it. Increasing of -- we already get a massive increase of parking, debris, and traffic. We don't have to jam everybody who comes into the city into that one neighborhood. We can expand into the west side, back over into 21218, add people to the beautiful city around this. That's just where we come from, and that's what we're thinking. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm sorry, just because you've put this on the record as a point of view, I just have to rebut this because I just don't think it's true. Homeownership is really the thing that ensures that only -- that only people of means can access a certain neighborhood. Apartments are not the thing of wealth, right? Apartments are the thing of people who maybe only need a certain amount of square footage for their home and don't need a whole home. If the neighborhood can only accommodate whole homes, two, three, four-bedroom places, then it can't possibly accommodate anybody who needs less than that or has only the means to afford less than that. I just, I can't abide the notion that apartments are the thing that would just like keep the neighborhood only exclusively aligned for like wealthy people. It just doesn't make any logical sense to me.
Also, this neighborhood wasn't the wealthy chunk. When we moved in, these houses were considerably less expensive than those south of 34th or north of 37th. As I said, this was the much less affluent section of Wyman Park. And granted, when we moved in there, the prices were lower. We already have a sizable apartment complex there. My statement was more that if folks come in and move and they stay in the neighborhood during their term at Johns Hopkins, which is a large portion of our renters in that neighborhood, they're there for four years. They don't stay to have a family. That's what I mean in terms of they don't build the lasting neighborhood, not that there's a lack of opportunity. My opinion is that the cost of a row house in the city of Baltimore is absolutely ridiculous. And that's an effect of just the society we live in. And there are several houses in my block that are broken into apartments that three, four people live in. You can have a row house with three or four different individuals living in them as apartments or as shared spaces to cut the cost down without having to build a 65-unit apartment building adjacent to another apartment building. That's my point. And I totally get that in terms of economic access to an area, true. But as I said before, with the row houses, I would like to see rebuilt. I would like to see the people who live there be able to live there again.
There's nothing about the current zoning that prohibits that, though, right? I mean, exactly what was there can be rebuilt under the current zoning. The only thing that this rezoning can do is make less allowable. It doesn't -- but that's not one of the things that it changes, I mean.
Right, but again, if you leave an empty space that is of that size, and someone comes in and can buy out everyone else and build something larger with 30, 40, 50 residents.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, a point of clarification. Is this public testimony?
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's my point. Yeah, we can do that, but again, someone with a lot more money can come in and do something that may not have the neighborhood's best interest at heart.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing me back on. I do have one other person online, but I wanted to just clarify that the purpose of this rezoning is to be able to correct a mistake, okay? And as we know, we need housing units, we need all kinds of housing units, but what we're trying to do here is to correct a mistake and to rezone this area. And the residents who've lost their homes are rebuilding there, which is good. And I wanted to make sure that they had the opportunity to have the same guidance that everybody else does in the area. So as you know, I'm all about building more units. We've got a lot going on all over my district. Just want to be very clear that what we're trying to do here is to create the same type of opportunity and the same, you know, making sure that there's consistency on the both sides. It made no sense for that side to be zoned commercial when it's never been commercial ever. And I think one of the reasons why we're taking the church out is to be able to still have that as commercial, and that could be an opportunity at some other point in time.
Thank you. We have somebody online?
We do.
We've got a -- state your name and position, whoever you are. I'll just take a moment here. Again, I'm getting my sea legs still. I want to make clear that people giving public testimony can always be asked questions by the committee members. If you have any questions for anybody giving testimony, whether an agency representative or a member of the public, please feel free to -- I'll recognize you. Do you have a question?
I do, yes.
For the bill sponsor?
Yep.
Okay, great.
So Councilwoman, can you share the community engagement process for this particular rezoning bill?
Yes. So what we did was when I discovered that there was a C-1 after the fire when we were trying to help the residents, we did have a discussion among, you know, the six households, and then also talked with the community association. I went to the community association at least four times to try to, you know, at least talk about this issue. And then there was, there's two, there's the hearing that happened at the Planning Commission and here. There was public posting, there were letters. We engaged, we tried to engage every single person that had been a victim of the fire on that side of the block. We had a long conversation with the church. So my typical process for any rezoning in my district is to work with the residents around the area specifically first as to whether or not that's something that they want, especially if it's like a developer that's coming in that wants to do something. And so I asked all of those questions first before doing that, and it made sense to be able to do this rezoning simply because it had always been residential in that area anyway.
All right, we're -- thank you. We're going to try again with Adam online.
I did text him.
Is he able to unmute himself?
I'm on the phone. Can you hear me?
Hey, yeah, there you are.
There you are.
Awesome. My name is Adam Huganear. I've been resident at, or was resident at 3459 Keswick, which is one of the houses that came down. A clarifying question before, does -- so I would like to say I agree with everyone who has spoken before me, with Jeremy, the woman who spoke first, right? Name I cannot remember, I'm sorry. But the -- I do think that there is, if R-8 is restricted, well, there's two parts of everyone, is that whether it's a mistake or whether it's not. If this is a mistake, it's a mistake that should be fixed. I think that's a separate process. If this is a discussion, and if R-8 is restrictive of any type of additional housing that could be there, that is definitely something worth considering. So I would be in, I do want, I do not want this area to be C-1, but I am not well versed enough on zoning regulations to say whether or not R-8 is, or whatever we are going for is specifically what the neighborhood needs. So a little confusing support there.
Any questions for Adam? Michelle, can you advise to the, what is a mistake?
Are you asking me what the standards for mistake are?
Mm-hmm.
It has to be a factual mistake at the time the last comprehensive rezoning was done so that it's not a mistake of judgment. It's a mistake based on facts that weren't taken into consideration at the time of the
How would such a fact be evidenced?
I'm not sure. I lent my -- I lent my report to Tyler, so he has the standards. Thank you. So the legal standard for mistake is that in the last comprehensive rezoning, the council failed to take into account then existing facts so that the council's action was premised on a misapprehension. For instance, I suppose a mistake would be when they were considering what they were going to do in the comprehensive rezoning, they just missed that street. Or maybe there was evidence that the area in which these streets were located was trending far more residential as opposed to anything else. It could be any number of things, but it can't be that it just wasn't a good idea or that it appears that, you know, they made a mistake in judgment in leaving in a certain way. And I will say also that evidence that the Planning Commission actually considered that for these particular properties, this assemblage of property, and decided during the course of the last comprehensive rezoning, if that was done, then that is evidence that this was not a mistake.
Okay. I feel a little bit uncomfortable about this bill right now. I'd like to recess on this bill for the moment and hear the other bills and come back to this bill either after we hear the other bills or at a later date. Unless there are any further questions or comments about the bill.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
The recess, things like that, as far as I understand, are in the chair's discretion, so I'm not here to question it. You know, it's fair that I'm listed as a co-sponsor. I appreciate the testimony offered. I still stand in support of it at this time or at some future time that it comes before us to vote. So glad to have time for further conversation among committee members and, you know, explain my reasons why and things like that. So not trying to preclude your plans at the moment, just to say that I'm continued... I'm ready to move forward when and if we have that opportunity, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you. We're going to go on to Council Bill 250022, zoning, R8 zoning district, conditional use, maximum building height variances, 1121 Bayard Street. Chairman Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a standard rezoning bill granting the variance for certain bulk and yard regulations at 1121 Bayard Street, Lot 0767... Lot... I'm sorry. Lot 0767, Lot 032. This is an opportunity for a residence of Pig Town to rebuild after a BG&E gas explosion two years ago. We've gotten significant community support from the community association, but also residents within the community as well. So I look forward to the discussion, and if any of my colleagues have any questions, we can address them then.
Great. Thank you. We have the... I don't have any questions. Any questions in the committee? Great. Also, if you want to answer any further questions from your seat, don't feel... I just ask noncommittee members to be out there. Thank you. City Solicitor?
Thanks, Chair Dorsey. The Law Department stands by its report and approves the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Great. Department of Housing and Community Development?
Jason Wright, representing DHCD. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Great. DOT?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Luciana D'Esfer, DOT. We send by our no-recommendation bill report.
Great. Thank you. Do we have anybody from the council president's office here?
Hey. As we've kind of raised the question about BMZA referrals and Finance Department referrals, I think it's worth not having to waste Luciano's time coming in here for certain types of bills. We had a little conversation before we started hearing.
Great. Thanks. Planning?
Planning Commission recommends favorable both for the conditional use, for the additional height, as well as the related variances for bulk.
Great. Thank you. Fire Department?
They stand behind their report, Mr. Chair.
No objection.
Yes, sir.
Public Works defers to planning.
We defer to planning. Thank you.
Department of Finance defers to planning.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Great. Do we have any public testimony on this bill? We have representatives for the applicant.
Mr. Chair, I don't believe they are testifying. They've been signed.
All right, great. And we have findings of facts in the bill report to the effect of the uniqueness, particularly the peculiar circumstance of this property having been blown up. It's also clear to me this is a fairly unusually small-sized property for the zoning district. And to me, that seems pretty peculiar, unique. I'd like to actually move to find facts as a committee on this, so we'll do that before we take a vote. Is there... There's... What's that? We can? We can? No? We can? I'd like for the... For us to do that. We can adopt the finding of facts that have been submitted by the applicant in the bill in the bill file. We'll just take a voice vote to adopt findings of facts as they are submitted in the bill report. All in favor of adopting the finding of facts? Say aye. 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 All opposed? Say nay. We have one nay. Okay. With the finding of facts are adopted and will be recommended to the council. All in favor of approving... We don't have any amendments to the bill, correct? No amendments to the bill?
No amendments.
All in favor? Yes, sir?
I would prefer to abstain. My understanding is that prior to a vote, I'm supposed to declare my intention to the chair of my intention to abstain from the final vote on the bill. I think that's what I'm supposed to do, but I am open to correction at all times.
I don't know of any reason in the council rules that a member is precluded from abstaining on a bill, but we can't take a vote with only three members of the committee voting on it. We need four members of the committee in order to vote on the bill at all. Can you take this conversation away from... Okay. I'm reading the rules here to say a bill resolution or amendment is recommended by a committee for passage by the council with an affirmative vote of a majority of council members present for the committee hearing. We have a quorum here present and can vote on this. And even if one abstains. So I will... It's fine. I don't care. Do you want to come back to your seat to vote?
So...
Do you have some other comment?
Yeah. So I would like to... Yeah. So if we don't vote this out today, Mr. Chair...
We're going to vote this right now.
But I'm saying it's only three members, so we don't have quorum.
We have four members here.
Well, one abstained.
The rules say that we just need a majority of the members present. The finding of facts have been adopted, all in favor of... Sorry, we're going to do a roll call vote. Would somebody move the bill? Favorable?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Councilmember Parker... Oh, Gray?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Parker?
Abstained.
Abstained. The committee votes favorable to recommend the bill favorable to the council at the next council meeting. The next bill is 250023, rezoning 3200 Lilly Avenue. This is a bill to rezone...
Yes.
...this property from the R4 zoning district to the I zoning district. Please tell us about the bill. Councilman Porter?
So you've summed it up correctly, so I don't have anything to add. I would just like to add that the... These particular applicants actually did a year and a half community engagement process with the Cherry Hill community, and so they received the letter of support from all three Cherry Hill Development, Community Association, the Cherry Hill Community Association, and my office as well. And so if any members have any questions, just let me know, and I look forward to a favorable vote.
Thank you. And I'm looking for a statement of facts here in the bill report. We do have a statement of finding of facts submitted by AB Associates. We'll come to them after we hear the agency reports. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Agency reports. Let's start with the Law Department.
Thank you, Chair. Law Department stands by its report and approves this bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Great. Thank you. DHCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Great. Thank you. Department of Finance?
Department of Finance defers to planning. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thanks. BDC?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom Welly, on behalf of BDC, we stand by our favorable bill report.
All right, great. Planning?
Planning Commission recommends favorable.
Can you tell us a little bit more about it? I haven't read the whole report.
Sure. So this is a property that was developed in 1987. Properties were assembled in order to build this relatively small self-storage facility. Prior to that, the property was vacant, going back into the mid-'50s from the aerials that I can see. At the point when the city went through comprehensive rezoning in 2017, for reasons that I cannot determine, this one property was grabbed to be residentially zoned with the adjacent residences. We don't have the prior community planner here. He retired, so we don't have a reason or rationale for why that might have been. I suspect it might have just been a simple staff error, and they grabbed one additional property. This has never been residential. I don't see a reason for it to ever be redeveloped for residential purposes. I believe that it is a mistake. And on that basis, Planning Commission agreed with our favorable recommendation.
Great. Thank you. Public testimony. Go to... Anybody from AB want to come up here and tell us anything about this? Okay. Great. But they have submitted facts to the council. Is there anybody else here to give testimony on this bill? Okay. Then I move that we find the facts as submitted in the bill packet. All in favor? Say yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Great. And we have no amendments to this bill? Is there a motion to move the bill favorable?
So moved.
Great. The chair votes yes. Councilman Gray? Councilman Porter?
Yes.
Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Great. The bill and the finding of facts will be brought to the city council on the next council meeting. We're going to take a quick recess here, and I'm going to consult with my colleagues about something. Give us five minutes. Thanks. All right. Everybody? Chamber?
Yeah. I want to know when it's going to collapse.
The committee has heard and voted on three bills. The committee is going to recess and undertake a little further discussion privately about the rezoning of the Keswick Avenue properties. The committee's in recess.